Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindup Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 PM, please. May I have a roll call? Mrs. Suarez.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Present.
Board member Arrington.
Present.
Board member Griffin. Board member Dawson.
Present.
Board member Hannah.
Absent.
Board member Taylor.
Present.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Present.
Thank you.
Absent.
I'm not absent, I'm present.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of United States.
The states of America and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. With liberty, peace, justice. Thank you. At this time, I would like to pause for a moment of silence. Please turn your cell phones off or to silence, thank you. This time, on behalf of all of our students, school, city, the state, the nation, and all of us who are all fighting this pandemic, we'll pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving right along to public comments. We do have one public comments comment that's Emily Rubenstein. She's representing the Lindup Teachers Association. Rubenstein, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm here. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education and Administration and any anybody else but Lindup community who is present as well. On behalf of the Lindup Teachers Association, I wanted to thank Board of Education and Administration for the generous Amazon gift cards for Teacher Appreciation Week. I also wanted to thank you on behalf of the teach those of us who reached longevity milestones for the Olive Garden gift certificates and engraved plaques. Your generosity is much appreciated. And also finally, last but definitely not least, I wanted to thank you for everybody's turnout. For those of you that were able to attend on Saturday for the parade that we had in honor of Mrs. Christensen's retirement. We wanted to celebrate with a more traditional party, but obviously with the current circumstances, we were unable to do so, and the parade was amazing, and we truly are Lindup family. And if you were unable to attend, or even if you were, there are pictures in the Google Drive and a video. There's a full 10-minute video, so you all have access to it. I encourage you to view it if you want to relive it or see it. Thank you for everybody that was able to help celebrate her. Thank you for your generosity of time and appreciation for LTA members and for honoring Mrs. Christensen.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to FOIA requests. And I don't think that there are, there's any, Dr. Jackson, there are none at this time?
There are none.
Okay. Upcoming events and correspondence? There is no correspondence, and I know that the protocol is that we don't read the upcoming events, but we have three, and they're focused on our eighth grade. Our eighth graders this for this particular month. I would like to ask the Board of Education, would it be possible if we can just read these three events so the community can know that we still celebrate these eighth graders despite this pandemic and all the hard work, the teachers and administration, all the hard work to make sure that they had a memorable event? Would that be okay with everybody?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Ms. Arrington?
Yes.
Can you read the upcoming events?
Sure. Friday, May 15th, 2020, eighth grade dinner dance with DJ Hot Rod from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Wednesday, May 27th, last day of school car parade, meeting at the fire department parking lot at 10:00 AM. And May 29th, 2020, virtual eighth grade graduation at 6:00 PM.
Wow, sounds like a great, great month. A great last of the months for them. But thank you very much, Ms. Arrington. Thank you, Board of Education members. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Need a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Arrington?
Madam President, I'm not sure if I would say it now or later, but I would like some agenda items taken out of the consent agenda.
Okay, you know, I think you have to wait till the motion is there, and then you can pull them out. Right? So let's get the motion on the table, and if you want to pull them out, we can. I need a motion.
That the board approved the consent agenda. This is Vicky Arrington, by the way. I make a motion that the board approved the consent agenda, including payroll for April 2020 in the amount of $413,662.58. The activity account reconciliation for April 2020. The accounts payable for April 2020 in the amount of $179,381.22. And the regular open session meeting minutes for April 21st, 2020.
Is there any, would anybody like to remove any items from this consent agenda, or they have any comments?
Yes, the payroll is normally separate. Second, we get a second? She's.
I'm sorry. Second as well. Who second that, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. And you were saying, Ms. Williams Wilford?
Payroll is normally separate from payables. Is there any?
It's not, it's not always like that. You know, when we've, we've separated it sometimes, but you know, we've also had it in a consent agenda. I mean, we've had them in consent agenda as well. Is there any concern about the payroll being separate from that?
Yeah. Because sometimes I voted on the payroll but not the payables. So they typically are separate.
Okay. I think the reason why we thought about putting it in, because we made sure that all the payables were online, you know, so everyone could view them, but if you would like to remove, you know, is that what you're saying? You like, you would like it removed?
Yes.
The accounts payable, okay. Okay, so we will remove the accounts payable from the consent agenda? Is there any item that anyone else would like to remove?
And the activity account reconciliation as well.
Okay, and the activity account reconciliation. Okay, so we'll move those after the consent agenda? So, Vicky, can you re-motion that consent agenda?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was muted. So I'm taking out reconciliation and payroll, correct?
Yes.
And payables, because the payables and payrolls are together. Okay, then I'm confused. What am I?
No, 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 Vicky. Just remove the payroll and the accounts payable. That's what she, I mean, activity account reconciliation. Is that what you, you should say, you want those two out of the agenda? So that's what, the three and four items is number three and number four are the items that'll go in the consent agenda.
Okay. I was asking for number two as well. I said the payroll and payables.
I know, that's what I was saying, three and four would remain in the consent agenda. One and two are the ones you communicated. Right? Vicky, I mean, Penny, is that correct?
Sorry, I was muted. So it's also three. Three is part of the accounts payable.
What? But I, but I thought you wanted the payroll removed and accounts reconciliation. They're going to be removed from the consent agenda. Therefore, the consent agenda that's left is three and four. So that's what I'm asking for her to do, a motion that removes one and two, and what will remain in consent agendas, three and four.
So for clarification purposes, I'm asking for one, two, and three to be removed. The only four.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Okay. So therefore, there is no consent agenda. Let's just do each item individually. That means that there's no consent agenda. Okay? Because that's almost every item on there except for one. Is that okay with the board? Okay, hear no objections. So I need a motion to approve the Lindup School District 92 payroll for April 2020 in the amount of $413,662.58. And a second, please?
Second. Okay.
Any discussion at all? Any discussion? Okay, there is none. I need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin.
Absent.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Motion carries. I need a recommend, I need a motion to approve the activity account reconciliation for April 2020.
I recommend approval of activity account reconciliation for April 20. This is Vicky Arrington.
And a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion? And a roll call, please.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
I abstain.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay. Motion carries. I would like to make a motion to approve the Lindup District 92 payable for April 2020 in the amount of $1,179,381.22. I need a second, please?
Arrington. I second, Vicky.
Any discussion? And a roll call, please.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin, or Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
I abstain.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular open meeting minutes for April 2021, 2020. And a second, please?
I recommend.
Tanya Taylor, second.
I just need a second, thank you. Any discussion? Any corrections?
Yes. There's a correction. I was present at the meeting, and it listed I was absent and doesn't say exactly what time I came into the meeting. So if that could be corrected, please.
It, yeah, to Ms. Suarez?
Yes, her name is listed on the second to last page saying that she entered the meeting, but she would like for it to be on.
Do you have a time, do you have a time, do you have a time on there that? I'm not looking at it right now, but.
Yes. It's listed second to last page that she arrived virtually at 8:22 PM.
Okay.
And so in the beginning of the meeting with roll call, the time needs to be reflected as everybody else's is when they virtually entered the meeting, if they entered late.
Okay. So Ms. Suarez, just put it at the top?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
At the top, okay. Okay, so we need to re-motion this item and with the corrections as directed. Okay? With the corrections that we discussed. So Ms. Williams Wilford, can you make the motion?
I make a motion that the minutes for the April 21st board meeting be accepted with the recommended corrections as stated.
And a second, please? A second, the motion?
Second.
Tanya Taylor, again.
Send a roll call, please. I'm sorry, is there any more discussion about the agenda item? Okay, there is none, go right ahead, Ms. Suarez, I apologize.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion, motion carries. Hey, new business. We need a recommendation, we need a recommendation to approve, to recognize State Representative Emanuel Chris Welch for his contribution to the Lindup School District 92, please.
This is Board member Dawson. Oh, go ahead.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay. This is Board member Brian Dawson. I recommend the approval to recognize State Representative Emanuel Chris Welch for his contributions to the Lindup School District 92.
And a second, please?
I second, Tanya Taylor.
Okay. Second. Tanya, is there any discussion? Dr. Jackson? Let you take over right now. And everybody, anybody else that may want to comment, we'll start with Dr. Jackson.
Yes, State Representative Chris Welch has been instrumental in making sure that if we have had any questions or concerns at the state level to get quick responses for us, we have engaged him in our get ready, get set, get fit. He's come and held that for the school district, and anything that we have asked him to do, solicited or unsolicited, has been accomplished by him. So I think that he is very deserving of this honor and to be actually recognized publicly.
Thank you. Was it, are there any board members, other board members who would like to make any comments about this recommendation?
This is Ms. Williams Wilford. I totally agree. Representatives, State Representative Chris Welch has been instrumental in a lot of initiatives that has taken place at Lindup, and we really appreciate his support, and we value him. I do have a question. What is the recognition that we, the board, or in the district will be providing? Is there like a key to the school or what? We hadn't talked about it, or maybe I missed it last month or something.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes. They each will receive a plaque and be recognized at the June board meeting.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm just calling Jonah Harris. I've been on the board for a while now, and I tell you this. He's been a consistent support in front and behind the scenes, you know, for our board, our school, as well as me. So definitely appreciate everything that he's done, and so happy we're able to recognize him along with Mr. Rouse, as well as Mayor Thompson. Okay. So at this point, need a roll call, please?
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Yay, motion carries.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Motion carries. Need a recommendation to accept the piano donation. Need a motion, please?
I make a motion that the board approve to accept the piano donation from Carolyn Dodaro at no cost to the district, Vicky Arrington.
And a second, please?
Tanya, tell us the second.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we received an email from Mrs. Dodaro, who is a reading coach, and she said in the midst of the pandemic, her parents and family are still in a process of moving, which was good, but they were wondering if they could donate their piano. It's a wordletser, and the only thing is that it needs to be tuned, and we said we would be happy to accept with the board's approval.
Is there any discussion?
This is Ms. Williams Wilford. Is there estimated cost of the piano?
We do not have that, nor did we ask for it. But there's no cost to the district at all. Was there anything specifically that you wanted to know, Mrs. Wilford?
No, just normally, when I've seen it on board reports, it's normally says the estimated cost of the donated item is blah. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, I've never seen that we've had a donated item, and I don't, I probably don't remember getting an estimate, but is that what, you know, is that a concern for any, for you or board members?
No, I was just asking, and it's typically, PACE gets a lot of donations, so you'll see on their, their agendas all the time. Well, typically you did. I haven't looked at them in a while, but for many years.
Yeah. All right. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve remote summer school for 2020. Please.
This is Tanya Taylor. I make a motion that the board approves the remote summer school 2020, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, commencing June 1st, 2020 through June 25th, 2020, not to exceed a total cost of $62,480 to be paid from the education.
All right. Hmm. Is, and a second, please?
Second, Arrington.
Dr. Jackson, is that, is that figure correct? Because I thought it was a lower cost during the board, during our finance meeting. Is that a correct amount for the summer school?
This is a correct amount for the summer school as we build into the contingency for adding additional students. That is the change.
Okay. I know in our finance meeting, it was probably a third of that cost. But the, what are the numbers now?
You know what? I'll let Dr. Spalding.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening to everyone and to the board. I hope and pray that everyone is doing well with their families. Interesting not to see your faces, but I'm glad to be here this evening to give a quick overview about the remote summer school program. The program begins on Monday, June 1st, and we will teach for 16 days, so four days a week, Monday through Thursday, until the final day of June, the 25th. Currently, we have just under 150 students registered for remote summer school, which is pretty remarkable. Our numbers have never been that high for in-person or onsite summer school instruction. You may recall that last summer was a breakthrough summer in that we adopted the WASU, excuse me, the WAS Ed STEM kits, and this summer, we're not able to do that due to our remote learning situation, but we are happy to offer a hybrid program of sorts where students from fifth, sixth, and seventh grade will be exposed to some STEM concepts, even though it won't be in-person instruction. So grab and go will still continue with the direction from Mr. Baranik on those hours, but we're going to continue with what we've already begun doing that parents are accustomed to, which is our Monday and Wednesday pickup. We will probably have daily pickups from 8:00 to 10:00 AM instead of Monday through Wednesday. Instruction will be provided around the areas for math and reading, along with science. We're also going to work extremely hard to incorporate physical education and social emotional supports. Unlike our regular summer school setting, this is an added benefit to the remote window. The state's guidance for summer instruction really encourages districts to take their time with not just pushing the learning gaps and the instruction around those gaps, but also the wellness of students. So we're taking a more intentional approach around the whole child during this remote window. And because of that, there are the necessities to have other staff members participate, and we've tried to protect some scheduling for that. So I'm not exactly sure on the other numbers, but I do know that with 150 students and with offering physical education and social emotional support, it is a more robust program because it is remote. And again, we're trying to work extremely hard to adhere to ISB guidance, which is updated regularly, but the most recent guidance encouraged school districts to take a more concerted effort towards students' well-being. And it's open.
Are there any questions from board members? I'm sorry, go right ahead. Thought you were, go right ahead, Dr. Spalding.
Yes, ma'am. It is open to all students. We are also pushing heavily for teachers to reach out to those students that are most at risk. We are finding that students who were generally considered very difficult to connect with during the school year in person are now exponentially more difficult to connect with during the remote window. So there are concerted efforts to ramp up parent contact. We're also looking for future guidance that will let districts know how we might proceed with just doing home visits in a social distance way, where we ring the doorbell and just check to see that students are actually connecting, even though we see they're reading emails or the parents might be getting messages. We still need to have that personal connection if they're not showing up in remote learning. So we're awaiting state guidance around that, and it is open to everyone, but we are trying really hard to get those students who we need to work extremely hard to connect with. Because of the numbers and recent research around remote instruction and class size, we're trying to keep those classes at about 15 students per adult in order to manage a Zoom where you have students being muted or breakout sessions for discussions. It does require a heavier lift with staffing due to the increased enrollment. It is for kindergarten through seventh grade. Currently, we're not inviting students to pre-K program for a lot of best practice reasons around primary age students at the pre-K age and remote instruction, as well as our eighth grade students. Many of them have been invited to their other high schools for remote instruction in the summertime. in the summertime. You can keep going, Josh, please. Um, yes, so these were approximate numbers that we offered based on 15 teachers and 10 paras with the current rates that I am aware of. So those were the numbers that I submitted to district on the screen there. And then the next slide, Mr. Ellisky. So this is just about managing the devices, working with Dr. Betts and Mr. Ellisky and Juan Moncaros and Mr. Kenobi to determine devices and insurance and just make sure that parents are aware of the protocols. But any student enrolled in summer school will be able to keep their devices through the end of summer school, and they will be returned on that Friday, the day after, and then that following Monday and Tuesday, so that we can give the district a full accounting of devices before July 1st, so that we can take the necessary steps to either repair devices or prepare for the fall. You can keep going, Mr. Ellisky. That pretty much wraps it up. I think I've kind of addressed all these items, Mr. Ellisky, keep going. And then the professional development to provide some time for teachers to collaborate will be on that Thursday, May 28th and Friday, May 29th. So teachers will have an opportunity to examine how we might improve student learning with gaps of instruction in terms of the standards that they have not been exposed to due to the remote window. So we're trying to be real intentional about planning, and we have asked for planning time on that Thursday and that Friday with our reading consultant, Dr. Walker, and that is the tentative budget for that same staff number on the previous slide. This is for the eight hours of professional development to plan for summer school that Monday, June 1st. And there will be virtual field trips embedded into the experience for our students, and I think that just about wraps it up. So thank you, Board of Education, for this opportunity to share this information.
Dr. Spalding, I'd like to make a comment. Um, at Finance Committee meeting, the stuff that I showed, the Finance Committee had seven teachers and seven paras, and that was based off of the current enrollment that we had at that particular time, this was subject to change. And as you got more information, the numbers of teachers and the number of paras have increased, and that's why there's the increase in the actual cost for the remote summer school.
I see. I think when we talked, Vicki, you can confirm this, the numbers were lower, the teachers were probably half the number of teachers, correct? And a lot has happened in the last, what, week? So I'm happy to hear about that.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah, happy to hear more students are involved. I think it was 100 last week, if I remember, and, um, and I was surprised that more parents hadn't encouraged their children, and that's exactly what happened. So hopefully the numbers will even grow higher in the, in the next couple of weeks. Any questions from any board members at all?
Uh, one question, this is board member Dawson. Uh, so what we're saying is we're voting on what we have, and hopefully there are more children who will take advantage of it, and parents, we're voting on this number, but if people do join, we'll pay that difference as well, correct?
Yes, the primary factor with that is that if we have the amount of staff to meet the needs of all of the children. But yes, sir, Mr. Dawson.
And Mr. Dawson, this looks like an overestimate, just in case, is that what it is, Dr. Jackson? And maybe Ms. Baranik, is this an overestimate to make sure?
Yes, it is.
This is Ms. Williams Wilford, I'm glad to see that it go, it starts at kindergarten, so that's really awesome. I know that's some changes that the district has made over the last few years or so, but just wondering if those are students who this school year are pre-K going on to kindergarten, or are those students who are currently kindergartners that would be moving on to first grade in the fall?
That's a great question, Ms. Williams Wilford. These are current kindergartners, and the kindergarten team has been extremely busy, not only helping to plan for what the remote summer instruction might look like, but in addition, they've had a series of transition meetings with the pre-K teachers about those students who will be transitioning up. But the summer program are for kindergartners who are headed to first grade. The other wonderful thing about the summer program that I neglected to mention is it will allow us to continue our partnership with local universities for increasing the eligibility or minority certified or licensed teachers. So we do have two paraprofessionals that have been accepted to Dominican's Alternative Licensor Program, and they will assist with summer instruction to meet their university coursework needs. And so that just speaks to our policies and allowing us to be true to that partnership with local universities and opportunities for those paraprofessionals to develop and grow into licensed educators. So we're extremely excited about that partnership as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other board members?
Yay. Hey, Madam President, Dr. Spalding, it's board member Hannah. Question, I seen what it said about virtual field trips, what is that?
That is a great question, and I have only taken one virtual field trip. The third grade team has developed a wonderful experience for their students. So it is a new phenomenon that maybe Xavier can tell you more about once he experiences it. Mr. Graff has also done a lot of planning so that she can help support some of the teachers in planning virtual field trips, but it's my understanding that students are sort of immersed in a virtual setting to ask questions or do scavenger hunts, maybe be led on a guide to any number of places around the world and even in outer space. And so it just allows the technology to take us to other places to extend the learning that students might have with reading and math or science and, and just go on a virtual field trip.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Any other questions? There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Juarez.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Thank you.
Great, motion carries. Now I need a recommendation to approve the 2021 Summer Professional Development Institute, please.
So I make a motion, this is Vicki Arrington, by the way, I make a motion that the board approved the 2020, 20, I'm sorry, 2020 through 2021 Summer Professional Development Institute on Fridays, June 5th, June 12th, June 9th, June 26th, Wednesday, July 29th, and Thursday, July 30th, not to exceed a total cost of $27,269.
In a second, please.
Tanya, tell you last second.
Thank you. Dr. Betts and Dr. Spalding.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, and Community. We are offering the Summer Institute again this coming June, every Friday, for all staff who are needing to participate in something that is aligned to their individual needs as an instructor. And so we have a lot of curriculum mapping going on. As you know, we have been able to map in the last couple of years several of our content areas, so we're going to be taking a look at those items and kind of also talking about how we can move our children forward when we reconvene school in the fall. And so we do have a little bit higher participation this year, but I think we attribute that to some of the magnification of the relevancy of the need to do some of these things. And then also, because we do have the time now to really sit down and roll up our sleeves and focus on that, that's an opportunity that will greatly benefit our children. Um, this is just, these are just the numbers in regards to the total hours. We do have participation from both LTA and LSSA. As Dr. Spalding mentioned, we do have some people who are enrolled in the program to get their alternative teaching license, and we want to foster our own staff members because they are a part of our community and they know our children and families already. So it's an opportunity to bring them into this and to also push our boundaries a little bit in terms of instruction. So we're encouraging that participation from our paraprofessionals.
Wonderful, is that in your presentation?
Yes, I think so.
Are there any other questions from any board members regarding the Summer Professional Development Institute?
Does the district plan to invite teachers who were hired prior to the start of this? As they have in the past?
Yes, we will invite teachers who would be hired prior to the start of this. They wouldn't be included in these numbers, though, because they haven't had an opportunity to RSVP.
And if those numbers change, we'll have to allocate those funds at a later time. Any other questions? Okay, there are none, we need a roll call, Mrs. Juarez.
Board member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving right along, I need, uh, this is a discussion on the proposed substitute daily rate salary increase, please. Right ahead, Mr. Baranik.
Good evening, Board Administrators and Community Members. I'd like to present a first read for the increase for the daily sub-rate. The first thing that I wanted to do is get information from all the school districts within Proviso Township to see what are their rates and how competitive Lindop is compared to the other districts. I did pool all the business managers, and I got a lot of information from them, and then I compared what our current rates were versus what theirs are. With looking at the rates that are out there, I would like to try to increase the rates to 125 for the daily sub-rate, and then increase the long-term sub-rate for after 10 days to 175. I think this would make Lindop a little bit more competitive. I know we don't have a very large subpool, and subs within the state of Illinois are pretty, pretty scarce. So I don't want to lose out for a few bucks for a sub to go to Bellwood or Proviso or to Hillside by increasing it. Like I said, I think this would make us more competitive, maybe secure our subs better, maybe have a bigger subpool, and then ultimately, like you said, we just want to have consistency within the building with our subs. We don't want to be scrambling week after week with getting someone new or not getting somebody, and hopefully this would, would secure our subs and help create that stability that we need when our teachers are out.
Okay, any comments from board members? Dr. Jackson, any comments?
This board member, Williams Wilford, how will this, um, these new rates be communicated to prospective subs that the district would want to take advantage of these opportunities for us?
We would post it on our website and then also post it through the regional office with it, and then also on our AESOP, when they are subs, we will post that new daily rate if it would be approved. Like I said, this is just the first read, wanted to get the information out to the board to review it, and it will be coming back in June for approval on it, but will be communicated so that subs will know that there would be an increase in the daily rate and what the long-term rate would be for the following school year.
Any other questions from any other board members at all?
It's board member Williams Wilford again. I'm just curious with Kamarek, Kameric being so close, just since it's going to come up again next month, what their rates are, because they're like really close to us as well.
I will solicit, I know their business manager, Kathy Gibson, I'll call again and get the rates for it, so when we bring it back, we'll be able to have a full comparison.
Thank you.
Mr. Baranik, how much, was it the company that we used for substitute, that Delta T? What, what company did we use last year to, to get the subs?
It was Delta T. What we were doing with Delta T was utilizing them more for, um, like half-days, when we had, we knew that we were going to have IEP meetings or professional learning community meetings on it. It's really hard to get a sub to come in for a half-day, they want to really do the, the full day so that they know what they're going to make on a daily basis. So that's why we were utilizing Delta T to kind of fill those one or two periods or even a half-day, which was working out before the actual school closure.
Yeah, I remember the rate was really pretty high for a full day, but at least we got a guarantee to have a body there. So I think it's kind of smart, I can't remember how much it was. Do you remember what the daily rate for a full day for Delta T?
The daily rate ranged depending on what the sub was that you got, but it was anywhere from $24 to $28 an hour, depending on what credentials they had.
Which translates to what per day? Like more like 200, right?
Well, we would have, it would roughly be about 150 a day.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, this is board member Williams Wilford again. I'm sorry, I thought I had, I thought 89 was on here, but now that I'm looking at it again, 89 is, so those are our two, like, 89, of course, is to the, what, north of us, and Kameric is closest to the south of us. So it would be helpful to have their information because they're like closer to us than any other district. I'm thinking, what do other members think on the board?
I, I, I probably think he has a good amount. I mean, if we want to have him do every one in the district, I mean, whatever the full board wants, but I think that, that he has a pretty good, uh, you know, he's done a pretty good job of getting information from us, and I know Bellwood is the most competitive, it seems, because people are over there, they, as I understand it, they probably pay more than most. But as I said, anything would help. I know that still puts us pretty, in pretty good competition. You think about us compared to, we're one school district, us even compared to, I know Kameric is a little different, but even compared to 89, it's a, it's a small environment compared to a bigger, a different, a different environment, maybe. But whatever the full board wants, I'm, I support. Any other comments from any other board members? Would it be okay to get those additional Bellwood and, and 89 just for? the final recommendation?
Not a problem. I'm actually typing up an email to their business managers. They get it.
Okay. All right, so you, the recommendation, I don't see it, was 125, right? And so this table this to next board meeting as well. This will be, this is the first read for it and if there's any more questions? There are none. We'll move right along. Get the next item up. In the business, we'll go with, need a recommendation to approve first read of press plus 103, please.
Make a recommendation to approve press plus 103 adopted as presented by IASB in the five-year review.
In a second, please.
A second. Brian Dawson.
One of the policy members would like to leave this one or?
It's just as stated, we adopted it as presented by the State School Board Association as well as the policies, as well as we've done the five-year review to keep current with policies so that we don't end up with outdated policies. Any other questions?
Any comments or questions from any board members? There are none. Roll call. Ooh, do we have a roll call? Yes. Need a roll call, please.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harris?
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully that's everybody. Motion carrying. Moving on to old business. Discussion on Innovative School Summit on Friday, June 26th through Sunday, June 28th in Atlanta, Georgia, and Wednesday, July 8th through Friday, July 10th in Las Vegas, Nevada. Need a second, I mean, a, a motion for, no, I guess this is just a discussion. So Dr. Jackson, would you like to begin?
Yes, I know that during the last meeting that we had, we were discussing the costs of the trip and we wanted to have the amount of people who would be attending to go to this, to present in Las Vegas as well as Atlanta, Georgia. But after reviewing this and having some further discussion, we just feel that it would not be fiscally responsible for us to do this now, given the, the nature of pandemic and what is going on and that we know that we will have some additional opportunities to present at other places when it is not such a critical moment as this. And we would like to take this off of the table.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Any comments or questions from any board members? Okay, there are none. We'll move right along to the discussion on COVID-19 update. Mr. Dawson?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll keep it very, very brief. We recently had an update on COVID-19 and after that update, there were, there was a report that there was a community member who was very upset with the update and how it was handled. And it was brought to my attention that there were individuals who might have thought that it occurred due to a breach of discretion on the board. And I appreciate them bringing that to my attention. I wanted to come forward because I had a affiliation with this individual. I wanted to come forward and completely say that I had nothing to do with that. Integrity and discretion is very important to me. And that going forward, I wanted to further say that it's been brought to my attention that there were, there have been individuals who had an issue with me being on an organization at the school, the PTSO, and these are connected. And that it may have made individuals uncomfortable, staff, et cetera. And as of now, I was going to withdraw and pull back and not be a part of that organization so that I, I would not have any, even the appearance of impropriety or any, any breach of discretion. So I just wanted to say that integrity is very important to me and just moving forward, just to always keep things above board and, and in front of the board. So people will know exactly where I stand on issues. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We're going to move on to board president's report. The only thing I, one, one, one of two things that I wanted to communicate is wanted to take the time to again recognize Mrs. Lori Christensen, who is retiring from Lindop School District 92 after 35 years. Mrs. Christensen is someone who, when you look at, she always is, always happy, always, she always has a smile, always has that bright spirit. And she always has high heel shoes too, if you, if you know, always has a beautiful pair of shoes on. Just want to say thank you and you'll be truly missed and job well done. And thank you all who were able to be there for the parade. We all were there, if not physically, in spirit, if not physically there. We all were there to celebrate you. The last thing I wanted to, to talk to the board about or just mention is something for the board to think about for future board meetings. It'll be something that I, I'd like to recommend to be put on the agenda for next board meeting. It's just for us to consider, I believe this pandemic will probably still continue over at least the next three months. And I was thinking about, this maybe the board might consider having an earlier board meeting, maybe starting at six rather than seven. A lot of board member, a lot of board members work early, you know, and may not be a best, a great idea, but just wanted to have some consideration because we do have some flexibility now. And it'll just be something that I just wanted for people to, to think about and be on the agenda for next board meeting to discuss. And that's really about it. Okay?
Miss Jonah Harris, what months are you recommending that we start earlier?
I figure we would talk about it next month and it would be the following month for the next probably three months, or whatever the board would want to do. You know, I, I feel like it'll be a team decision. But it's, you know, a lot of us, you know, it's a long time between now and, you know, maybe after the job to seven o'clock. You know, you have people that have to work in the morning early. And then virtual meetings kind of gives, gives us a bit, bit more flexibility to say the least. And, you know, just an option, you know, and we can discuss it as a board. But I know if we had the discussion, you know, my hope would be to us as a team decide when we wanted to initiate this and if we did want to do it. So for me, I'm just throwing it out there, but I think that we make a decision as a team, not as an individual. Okay. And I think it would be also, might be advantageous for our staff members as well, especially if we go into the summer months. Have a lot more. Going to the summer months are coming very soon, so just a discussion. So that'll be something that'll be on the board, on the agenda for next month. Okay? Moving right along to the superintendent's report. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good afternoon or good evening to the Board of Education, administrators, faculty, and any community members that might be attending with us virtually this evening. So the administration has been busy working to make sure that everything is perfect for the 2020 graduates. They've been coming in or they did come in last week. I believe it was the last day for photographs to be taken, but they did come, as you see on the slide, with their cap and gowns and they were able to give us a little descriptor as well. It was wonderful. It was really heartwarming and heart-wrenching at the same time. Heartwarming because we were able to see them, but heart-wrenching because we know that this is going to be something different. But I would like to just take this time to say a special thank you to Dr. Spalding and her team and the eighth grade teachers and everyone who has just put their hands on this to make sure that it is wonderful for our children regardless of the situation, if it is in close proximity or if it is virtually. And of course, Mrs. Smith, who helped with the decorations and Mrs. Tansley, they came in and I won't even tell you the day that they came in, but they came in and they made it happen to make sure that the graduates were taken care of. Next slide. Very good news. We were awarded the E-rate for Priority One funding for the internet. Congratulations, Mr. LSU. Thank you so much for applying for the E-rate again. It's a total of $21,546. So congratulations. Next, we did also receive the Property Tax Relief Grant in the amount of $30340. Kudos to you, Mr. Baranik. Next, we have our social distancing drive-through graduation, which will be held on Thursday, May 28th, 6:00 PM sharp at McDonald's in Broadview, in the Broadview Village Square. We should arrive approximately about 5:30 for lineup. But this is also something very exciting that Mayor Thompson has made come to fruition for our graduates as well as making sure that they have, there's some different bags and everything that will be distributed as well to all of the graduates. So I'm excited about it and I will be in contact with the board tomorrow just to get a poll to figure out who would be attending. And finally, student achievement. Over 8,200 instructional hours have been completed with teachers working with our students, which is phenomenal. Our programs and services, over 3,000 breakfasts and lunches have been provided. And to date, 327 devices have been distributed to our children. I remember at the last board meeting, there was concern that some of our special education children who were outplaced at Pace and other centers did not have their devices. We did some follow-up, Mr. Whitehead as well as Dr. Kay. And I've also been talking to Mary Beth Bay as well as Michael James over at Pace just to make sure that we, all of our children have been contacted as well as provided devices. And Lindop made the phone calls and so I'm happy to say that our children do have their devices. And that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Jackson? Okay, there are none. We'll move right along to committee reports. Finance Committee, Finance Committee met on last Thursday. Ms. Arrington, would you mind providing an update?
Okay, actually, everything has been pretty much discussed today by Mr. Baranik. We discussed, and in last meeting as well, we talked about the tentative budget and the timeline was presented last meeting by Mr. Baranik. The Summer School 2020 program, the Summers Professional Development Institute that we talked about today, as well as the increase in the substitute daily rate. Those were items discussed, so we have some closed agenda items that will be discussed after this open session.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Okay, there was no personnel meeting. Move right along to Pace meeting. It's Mr. Dawson? We have one April 22nd?
The Pace meeting is actually this upcoming Thursday. So there, there's not going to be as much on the table, but I know that they are working on our, like, special aid reimbursements. And I think by the first of June, they'll probably be able to get us that information. And at this next upcoming meeting on Thursday, I, I'm going to ask about the resolution for the, the busing company. And I'll be reporting back to the board after that.
Thank you. Any questions at all? Moving on to the safety meeting. Ms. Williams Wilford, Mr. Hannah, I know you had one April 22nd. You'd like to report that, on that? Mr. Hannah, Ms. Williams Wilford?
I'm sorry, I don't have my notes with me on the safety meeting. Dr. Jackson, do you recall?
Yes, we did have someone to come in and to speak to us about a camera system. We also talked about Lindop being in compliance with the policy for timeout and restraints. And then we also went over the, the final information for the safety officer, just to bring it back to the committee after the vote had been taken by the board.
Wonderful. Thank you. Policy Committee. You all met May 6th. Mr. Dawson and Ms. Williams Wilford?
Everything was presented tonight.
All right, thank you. There's no peer meeting? I know technology was today, Ms. Taylor, as well as Mr. Hannah?
Yes, we had a meeting today at 4:30, but Mr. LSU would give the update.
Thank you. Mr. LSU, you there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, community members, staff. So we talked about E-rate guidelines and how the district receives Priority One funding and how we apply for Priority Two funding. So we're still waiting on Priority Two funding. We talked about social media presence using Lindop as a hashtag when we come back to school next, next school year. And we updated the tech community on the new website. We showed them what the new website looks like and our due date is June 30th. If they have it, we're public. We're working on checking errors and going through the final page.
I could barely hear you, Josh.
We talked about a new website and our target date is June 30th for the new website.
Thank you very much. Community Engagement Committee, which is tabled into further notice. Moving on to Negotiations Committee. We actually did meet on May 11th and we'll discuss that during closed session. Okay? And I don't think there are any additional public comments. So that means we need a motion to go into executive session at 8:09 PM, please.
Move that we, that the board go into closed session under five Illinois compiled statutes, 122, C1489 and 10 to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline or performance of specific employees of the body, evidence or testimony presented in open hearing or enclosed hearing where specifically authorized by law, security procedures, school building safety and security, instance, security, student disciplinary cases, and the placement of individual students and special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at 8:09 PM.
In a second, please?
Say it again.
In a roll call, please.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Taylor.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board member Jonah Harris.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Board of Education members, would you like to have a five-minute break between sessions? So you want to just go right into executive session?
Let's keep it moving.
Okay. Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, like to thank our public and our administrators for being here tonight. Thank you very much. Have a good, have a good evening. Okay. Get this closed session agenda.
Ms. Jonah Harris, just give us one moment. We're actually removing.
Not a problem. I'm just trying to find my closed session agenda, so you're fine.